Six dash four, which is also known as sunshine law. The matters discussed will be made public when confidentiality is no longer required and formal action pursuant to said discussion shall take place only at a meeting to which the public has been involved. We are ready to begin our regular public meeting at approximately 7:10 PM here in the Harrison Conference Room. The Board of Education meeting is livestreamed and all community questions and comments are welcome in person here at the Harrison Conference Room. The Caldwell West Caldwell Board of Education regular monthly public meeting is compliant with the Open Public Meeting Act and NJSA ten colon four dash six, which is also known as sunshine law. Notices have been sent to the Progress Caldwell, New Jersey, Star Ledger Newark, New Jersey, Tap into of West Essex, and they have also been posted at the Board of Education Business Office here in the Harrison School Building and have been delivered to the clerks of both Caldwell and West Caldwell. Brian, can I ask you to take the roll call, please?
Yes. Mr. Diambola.
Here.
Mr. Elko.
Here.
Ms. Gette.
Here.
Ms. Grasso.
Here.
Mr. Cipollatti.
Here.
So five members present, no absences, we have a corner.
Thank you. Can we please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Brian, do we have any communications to share?
None tonight.
Dr. Conklin, superintendent's report.
If possibly, we'd like to go at order a little bit and I'd ask Mr. Romano to come up.
Sure.
I know there's been several questions from the community about the process we're currently following in terms of the updating of the health and PE curriculum. Mr. Romano's been helping lead that process and I wanted him to just kind of summarize where we are right now and then I have a couple of other things to interject and we'll go from there.
Perfect.
Good evening, members of the board. Dr. Conklin, as you are aware, the New Jersey Department of Education has mandated the implementation of several new student learning standards within the health PE curriculum taught in grades K through 12. The standards must be taught, but the method of teaching these standards has been left to us. Dr. Conklin has asked me, along with Alina Jacobs, who is the Director of Elementary Education, and Elizabeth Fisher, the Director of Secondary Education, to coordinate the research necessary to implement these new standards in the best way possible for our students, our teachers, as well as our parents. Before I describe the process that we went through to complete this task, I think it's important that we stress that our health and PE staff are accomplished professionals. They are indeed experts in their field. Their emphasis regarding the new standards was to make our students safer. During the 2021-2022 academic year, our elementary school, middle school, and high school PE and health teachers have met many times, worked countless hours, and done lots of research to achieve this goal. The first task was to identify which of these new standards were not already covered in our existing curriculums. Many of these standards were also actually being taught. Once all of the standards were identified, they were placed in lesson units or topics of study, thought to be best areas to introduce these subjects. Specific examples were formulated, including videos, projects, presentations, and in some cases, just definitions. The updated curriculum will be made available online for viewing and comments or questions this week. Rather than identifying all the new K through 12 standards, the elementary schools, the middle school, and the high school will hold a meeting to review the changes and discuss the different standards and related lessons in the fall. They will address any specific curriculum questions or concerns at that meeting. Thank you very much. Back to you, Dr. Conklin.
Thank you, Mr. Romano. I just want to reiterate the fact that the wonderful job the committee did working together under Mr. Romano's leadership to draft the revised curriculum, which was presented to the Curriculum Technology Committee for Review. Please understand, before we ask for any board approval, the district is going to present the health and PE curriculum to the community in draft form and receive comment and feedback online. Each school will schedule a time for discussion between the parents, the health teacher, and the administrators to review the implementation of the updated curriculum and to answer questions or respond to concerns. The board will not vote on the adoption of the curriculum until after these two opportunities are provided to the community. Any adoption of the revised or updated health curriculum for the 2022-23 school year is contingent upon board approval at a public board meeting, which then will permit time for community comment, which will likely happen sometime in October. I also want to reiterate, in April of this past year, I did send a letter to the community. If at any time they are uncomfortable with the subject matter or the lessons being presented to their children, they can opt out. There's a process for that. The building administrators will explain that process when they meet in September. So parents are aware how they can opt out of a particular lesson that they disagree with that is going to be presented in the health and PE curriculum. Please understand that the district is obligated to adopt the standards provided by the Department of Education. It's not something that we could reject, but it's something that we are going to make sure we take our time in doing and making sure the community is comfortable and understands what those standards are and understands their ability to opt out of particular lessons if they feel it's something that they don't want their children exposed to. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
That's all you have?
That's all I have.
Under the president's report, we have scholarship recipients?
Yes.
Okay. I don't have the list.
I'm sorry. I have it in my office.
As we're pulling that up, additionally, under the president's report, we have three committee reports to read out on. So I'll start with finance.
Sure.
Mr. Elko.
So the finance committee met on, it was August 11th, it was myself, Dan was there, Dr. Conklin, Mr. McCarthy, and Ms. Jones were all present for our committee meeting. I've said it before and I'll say it again, these board meetings are not the best mechanism for distributing information to the public, but if you can focus on these committee meetings, I do think it's a great opportunity for you to see what real work is getting done, kind of behind the scenes. And I'm excited to kind of share some of the stuff that the facilities and finance committee has been working on lately. So first, kudos to the district. We received a little over $1 million in extraordinary aid from the state that's going to go right into our general fund to help provide some of the services and benefits you're going to hear in the rest of this report. Unfortunately, the flip side of that is obviously we have a lot of employees, right? A lot of employees who are teachers, are custodians, are nurses. The cost of health for our employees at the school is going up by 15.6%. That is something that is dictated by the state. That is not a decision that we all have made, right? That is a significant blow to our budget of approximately $1 million that we're going to have to account for. Through some smart scheduling and planning, we're going to be flat for the next six months, I think, but then that increase is coming. So if you look, I think it's section nine under finance in today's agenda, this board is putting together a resolution, basically calling for the state to reexamine and find a better solution rather than increasing that cost. It's something that a lot of the school boards across New Jersey are doing, but it's certainly something that we're going to be voting on today. And keep that in mind, when you think about all the balancing that we have to do with costs, it's tough enough to kind of just keep our wages increasing year over year, but when you get a 15.6% bump in the cost of the health insurance, that's a significant kind of hurdle to overcome. That being said, the district's run very well, so we have been able to set money aside for certain things. We won't be voting on it today, but even before the Uvalde tragedy, this school district started focusing on what we could do to help with our security issues. And we're going to be overhauling all of our camera technology in all of our schools to eliminate any kind of blind spots that we may have. We didn't just kind of come in with a blank check sheet, we were able to find someone who could take the cameras we already have and repurpose them where possible, right? Sometimes a camera is not good where it is right now, but it might work somewhere else. So by repurposing those cameras, we're able to save $150,000 off the total cost of this initiative. We're hoping to vote on that in the next month or so and have those cameras in place relatively soon. The arts department frequently comes up. We're very excited to say that we have engaged a consultant to improve the audio technology in the high school auditorium. So we're going to be able to have someone come in and start working the fall to work on the audio. So by the spring performances, we should have, I think, an improved experience for not just the people who are sitting there, but for the kids who are performing, which is very exciting. On the technology side, we are engaging with a company to provide an upgrade district-wide for wireless. Obviously, when the pandemic came in, the import of wireless technology came to the forefront and we were scrambling a little bit. I know because I wasn't on the board yet and I was sitting in your all seats yelling at the board about why we weren't ready. We're not waiting, you know, we're being proactive. So what we're going to do is we're going to improve the wireless ability, technology, the servers across all seven schools. And again, the district was able to get federal funding to cover 40% of the cost of that implementation. So again, we're saving as much money as we can while making the investments that are going to directly impact the kids and the teachers, right? You're going to see that immediately, the value of that. Another issue that we had was coming out of the pandemic, we were trying to do a lot of things, including introduce a new math program that is clearly superior to our old math program. Everybody agrees with this. If you look through the finance schedule here, you'll see that we've approved money for a consultant to help as a resource, to help coach and support all of the teachers who are engaging in this new kind of, it's not new anymore, but this semi-new math program investigations that we put into district. So the more we can help those teachers, the better they can help the kids and the better our scores are going to be and the better we're going to perform as a district. We're also replacing four vans that we actually lost during Hurricane Ida. About five or six years ago, the district made a very specific strategic decision. Instead of outsourcing transportation, they decided to invest in vehicles and run their own transportation. That costs money, right? But it was an investment. So because we did that, not only are we able to, you know, successfully manage all of our transportation now, which I'm sure you all understand how hard it is to find drivers and find people right now with the staffing issue. Not only do we have these folks in-house and we have our own transportation vehicles, but other districts now come to us and outsource their transportation needs to us. So we're able to actually offset the cost even further. With the insurance that we had for those vans, we were able to get about $100,000 back. So for four, I believe new, right?
Brand new.
Brand new vans are going to cost the school district a total of $187,000, which is a fantastic value. And then finally, on the facility side, you know, we, for anybody who has kids who are in athletics in town, you know that there is a crunch on fields. Everybody's always fighting to try to get fields at certain times. One of the things we as a district can do to help with that is really try to improve the fields that we have to offer. Wilson School is not one of our strongest fields, largely because it's built right next to a swamp and it's very wet all of the time. So the district has invested some money and is going to, hopefully in the next year or so, be able to input some new drainage into Wilson. I don't think it's going to solve all the problems, but if we can salvage that as maybe one additional, you know, good baseball diamond or good soccer field that we can throw into the mix, you know, it doesn't just help the schools, that helps the community at large. And, you know, in line with that, we are still, and I think very close now, to finding a solution that will provide bathrooms at most of those fields. So if you have T-ballers at Washington School, they won't have to hold it for the full hour. If I'm forgetting anything, is that enough? It's probably enough. I'm sure people are tired of me by now. But like I said, these committees, and Chris is going to do a great job explaining curriculum in a second, you know, catching us outside of these meetings or listening to these committee meetings is the best way to get an update on what's going on behind the scenes.
Chris?
All right. We had our curriculum and technology meeting on August 9th. Myself, Ms. Fisher, Ms. Grasso, Ms. Jacobs, Ms. Jones, and Dr. Conklin were in attendance. We talked primarily about curriculum review. We started in elementary, touching base with the visual arts, world languages, extending the gap program through three through eight. We briefly talked about the ESL program, a close reading program, and our elementary math assessments. We also talked in secondary education with the world languages, world culture, political theory, music, and very excited about the grade six executive functioning cycle. This is something for our sixth graders that's going to support all our new middle schoolers in their organization skills, their transition to the Google Classroom. We talked about discussions about the high school option, like the first 50, which is a, you know, first-year experience to support acclimation and transition to freshman year. We talked about philosophy through science fiction and Algebra I and geometry. We also got into the PE and health curriculum, which Mr. Romano kind of explained to all you guys. And that was our committee meeting.
Yeah, and I just want to also piggyback and say that, just a big thank you because at these meetings, you know, I know sometimes we don't speak up here, we're very quiet, it's designed that way. It can be frustrating to be a parent and sit here and just be talking and we're just here, blank stares, but the sixth grade executive functioning cycle class that's going to happen now in September for these incoming sixth graders came out of parent feedback. During COVID, parents were very stressed about the transition from the elementary schools to the middle school. It's always been something that there's been a big gap, a big hole into. Chris and I were very vocal about that in our curriculum meetings and a big thank you to our Assistant Superintendent Ms. Jones, Ms. Jacobs, and Ms. Fisher, who really put their heads together this year and kind of came to us and were like, guess what? We worked with Mr. Bertolo and we've got this new executive functioning class. I have, I've had three sixth graders go through the middle school. I have one coming in in September. I'm so thankful that she's going to have the blessing to have this. I wish my other three did and for generations to come, so very big thank you to them. And also just taking the feedback, the first 50 came out of, I just dropped my daughter at college on Saturday, and they have that similar situation at college where they do a first 50 for the freshmen to kind of acclimate them. And we brought it up at our curriculum meeting and our great team embraced it right away and said, we'll start looking at it maybe for the high school next year. So really good things, but just wanted to give a big thank you and a thank you to all of you when you come and share your thoughts, just so you know, like, we do hear you and action does happen. So, thank you.
Thanks, guys. The last committee report was a shared services committee, which was attended by Paul, myself, Brian, and Dr. Conklin, as well as representatives from both towns. That committee was established about eight to 10 years ago, and ultimately, the goal of it is to make sure we have good communications with both Caldwell and West Caldwell, but largely also to figure out how we share services. So there's a series of things that have happened along that period of time. Few things we did discuss, which are currently happening, is recycling, grass cutting, our gas and diesel we actually purchased at a discount through West Caldwell, and obviously there's police presence at our schools, which are part of it. Some of the bigger items were the building that are happening across the towns and what impact that may or may not have to the school districts and making sure that communication flow continues as the current construction is happening, but potentially other planned activities. And also, as Mr. Elko mentioned, the fields in town and sharing those for our recreation departments. There are some future activities and we will be getting back together in October to have another session on that. So those in attendance, just as an FYI, were Mayor Tempesta, Councilman Hilleck, and the BA from West Caldwell, and from the Caldwell side, Councilman Gates and Councilman Leese. So that's what we have as far as reports go. Okay, now we're going to, oh, one last thing. As was mentioned, we do have a list of scholarship recipients, which they asked me to read. I looked at the list, it's seven pages, each of which contains about 40 names, which if I do my math correctly, that's a lot. So we're going to have the list available for everybody so you can see the names on there, because I don't think everybody wants to hear me botch a bunch of names. So that's what we're going to do. Okay, we're going to move on to approval of minutes. Can I have a motion to accept the minutes from executive session of 6:06, 6:15, and 6:27? Public conference meeting minutes of 6:06, the regular public monthly meetings of 6:15, and the special public meeting of 6:27. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Brian, you take the roll, please?
Yes. Mr. Diambola.
Yes.
Mr. Elko.
Yes.
Ms. Gette.
Yes.
Ms. Grasso.
Yes.
Mr. Cipollatti.
Yes.
Five zero, motion carried.
Wait, thanks, Brian. We're now going to move to public comments on agenda items. We ask that the public participation be governed by the following. Participants must be recognized by the presiding officer and must preface their comments by an announcement of their name and address. Statements should be limited to three minutes' duration and may only address items on the agenda at this time. Participants may speak no more than once on the same topic until all others who wish to speak on that topic have been heard, and all statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. If you have any questions or comments on the agenda, please come up to the podium. Okay. All right. Since there are no questions or comments, we're going to move into committee reports for curriculum and technology.
For curriculum and technology, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, motion to approve items A through K on this evening's agenda under curriculum and technology.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments? No? Brian, take your roll, please?
Yes. Mr. Diambola.
Yes.
Mr. Elko.
Yes.
Ms. Gette.
Yes.
Ms. Grasso.
Yes.
Mr. Cipollatti.
Yes.
Five zero, motion carried.
Great, can we move to committee report for personnel, please? Personnel?
Please join personnel. Okay? Sorry, we're in the new format, so forgive us, please.
Do you want motions on all of these or do you want, like we used to do?
So, yeah, no, I have it. I think I have it.
A through J.
No. A through Q.
A, yeah. I got it right here. So upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, I'll make the motion to approve items A through Q on this evening's agenda under personnel-certificated staff, and then items A through I under personnel non-certificated staff.
You have a second?
I'll second it.
Great. Questions or comments?
I think it might be J, Julian. On second one, J is the vote.
It is J, yes.
Oh, okay. All right.
J is the vote, right?
Got you.
Yeah.
Any questions or comments? Brian, take your roll, please?
Mr. Diambola.
Yes.
Mr. Elko.
Yes.
Ms. Gette.
Yes.
Ms. Grasso.
Yes.
Mr. Cipollatti.
Yes.
Five zero, motion carried.
Thank you, Brian. We're going to go to finance.
So I make a motion to approve items A through N under finance, but not item J, section E, and not item K, section J, and not item O.
Can you repeat that?
Yep.
Yeah, that's like, A, B, C, D.
So, motion to approve A through N, but not to approve item J, section E, and not to approve item K, section J, and not to approve item O.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
I would just comment that, I know that was confusing. Those items are likely going to be tabled and appear on your next agenda. We're just breaking some things out administratively.
Okay. Take a roll, Brian?
Yes. Mr. Diambola.
Yes.
Mr. Elko.
Yes.
Ms. Gette.
Yes.
Ms. Grasso.
Yes.
Mr. Cipollatti.
Yes.
Five zero, motion carried.
Chris, Facility?
Yes. Motion to approve item A under Facilities.
Second?
I'll second it.
Questions? Brian, take your roll, please?
Mr. Diambola?
Yes.
Mr. Elko?
Yes.
Ms. Gette?
Yes.
Ms. Grasso?
Yes.
Mr. Cipollatti?
Yes.
Five zero, motion carried.
Thank you very much. And for policy, Ms. Gette, items A through C.
A through C.
Mm-hmm.
I make a motion to approve items A through C under this evening's agenda.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Questions? Brian, take your roll, please?
Mr. Diambola?
Yes.
Mr. Elko?
Yes.
Ms. Gette?
Yes.
Ms. Grasso?
Yes.
Mr. Cipollatti?
Yes.
Five zero, motion carried.
Thank you. Okay, now we're going to move into public comments. For public participations shall be governed by the following. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, we have to, I'm sorry, let's take a five-minute break?
After that, you could go, you could read that and then we're going.
All right, after I read this, we'll take the break, I'm sorry.
Sure.
So public participation shall be governed by the following. Participants must be recognized by the presiding officer and must preface their comments by an announcement of their name and address. Statements are to be limited to three minutes' duration and may only address items, or may address any items. Participants may speak no more than once on the same topic until all others who wish to speak on that topic have been heard, and all statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. So we'll currently take a five-minute break and then we'll reconvene. Thanks, everybody. Okay.
If you walk too long, just keep track. Ten after, we should probably take a break. We're still going.
Okay. Okay, we're gonna kick back in?
No.
Good? So, anyone have any questions or comments? Please feel free to come up to the podium at this time. Come on, somebody's gotta have to want it. We just took a break. I got it, I got it.
Hi, Laura Lapp from TAP. I don't know who your policy chair is, but a quick question on the policy for the student who is going to be on the board. Will they be accepted or appointed by the principal, by the students? Could you give a little information on that?
We just had that conversation. She's gonna be invited to the next board meeting.
Okay.
I'm, I'm gonna, I don't wanna let the cat out of the bag, because we need to talk to her, but we're gonna invite her, you know, now it's a her, so I let a little bit of the cat out of the bag, to the board meeting, and she'll be voted in like any other board member, so.
Can you explain the process, though, how that student was chosen?
So, again, if I explain the process, we'll...
That's letting the cat out of the bag?
We'll let the cat out of the bag.
Okay.
But, we did, we did talk to the high school principal and asked him who he felt would be the best representative on the Board of Education, and he felt a person who is actually in student government would be the best person. So, that was our selection process.
Hello, all. My name is Andrea Turco. I'm at 50 Park Place, Park Ave. So, my question is, what happens if we decide to not adopt the new regulations on the new curriculum, specifically sexual education plans? That's my one question that I have to start with. I do have another one, but I would like to start with that one.
If you could ask all your questions at once, we'll answer them when they come through.
Oh, okay. Now I lost my chain of thought. Oh, oh, okay, here we go. So, can you tell me what the new protocol is as far as the fall and what we're going to be following as far as COVID protocol? Are we wearing masks, not wearing masks? Are there any new protocols going on? That is my second question.
Got it. So, the first answer is, the district has to adopt the standards. We can't not adopt the standards. State regulation requires that the local school districts, public school district, adopt the New Jersey standards. We determine how we instruct with those standards, but we do have to adopt and teach those standards. So, we don't have a choice to reject those standards. The COVID protocols are all relaxed. The plan right now is to enter the school year with, without masks and continue to follow the CDC guidance and the Department of Health guidance. I'm, I'm waiting for specific guidance to drop the, three days before school starts. So, I don't want to release anything that I'm going to have to then turn around and say, "I'm sorry, but we just got this new guidance from the Department of Health, and they said we have to do this instead," because that'll be more upsetting than if you could just wait a little bit longer and so I, then I could give you the exact information you need to prepare for the school year. Right now, we are following the CDC guidance where students are allowed to return to school. There are no specific restrictions about wearing masks unless there is a, an outbreak, or students are returning from a positive bout with COVID. Other than that, we are not worrying about social distancing. We are business as usual as it was in two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, school year. That is where we are today with the most recent guidance. I hope that continues. I will send a letter out probably a week before school starts, specifically outlining the process and the procedure for a positive test and what we have to do, because the Department of Health and the Department of Education are still requiring school districts to report all positive cases. So, I hope that answers your question.
Yes, it does. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, just, oops.
Hi, I'm Taryn Kaufman. I live at thirty-five Marshall Street in West Caldwell. My questions are actually pretty simple. It's about the new sex education within the school districts, both in elementary as well as in middle school. As far as your opting-out plan, how are we as parents going to know, like, today's the day that you are going to be taught such and such a lesson, and then what is the game plan for those students that are chosen to opt out? Where are they going? What are they going to be doing during that time? And that's for both the elementary and the middle school levels, please.
So, each building is gonna have a specific evening, back-to-school night, where they talk about that process, particular to that building. There's a curricular map that will be introduced, and then you'll know exactly what particular lesson is taught on what particular day for what particular grade level, and if that's something that you're not comfortable with your child being exposed to, you would just email the principal, write a letter to the principal. I don't wanna step on their toes. They're gonna have a specific plan for you to communicate that to them, so they can keep track of that particular request, not to be at that particular lesson. But each building, health teacher and each building principal is gonna have a discussion about this at back-to-school night, so really early in September. Most of the, I don't wanna use the word controversial, but that's the word that's popping in my brain right now, lessons are gonna be taught later in the year. So, there's not an urgency for parents to find out tomorrow what's being taught. There'll be an opportunity for that before anything is really specifically introduced to students.
Okay.
And again, all of the curriculum that we're adopting at some point in the future, and the standards are by the end of second grade, by the end of fifth grade. So, we have plenty of time the rest of the school year to make sure we're doing right by the community in adopting this, these standards and curriculum.
And I just have one question if you guys, because I briefly looked at what was sent out today, and on the third grade level, a lot of the links for videos that the children will be watching, they were there. So, I watched a couple of them. And as a parent, they raised red flags for me. So, have you guys, as Board of Ed members, have you looked and viewed at those videos that have been shared already?
Some, some of the videos are samples. It's not necessarily the videos will be showing.
Okay.
Or the curriculum that we'll particularly be adopting. That was something from the state that said, "Here's an example of a video that you could show." So, when we release it, it's the state standards and it's what they shared. It's not necessarily what we adopt. That's the difference between standards and curriculum.
And then when the curriculum is finalized, will we as parents be able to view exactly what they'll say in the classroom?
Yes, there'll be a specific date for that. So, in October, may, hopefully, we'll have a finalized curriculum that has all those links and standards and information for you to, to, to review. But until that happens, you're, you're only gonna kinda see a rough draft of that.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Tony Yauk. I live at seventy-one Elm Road in Caldwell. With regards to the sex education stuff, it's been a while since I've been a third grader, but like, it might've said something about teaching students in third grade about masturbation and stuff like that. That seems odd to me. So, like, those kinds of specific things, what's changed? So, you may got, you may not know that kinda stuff, but like, has that always been taught to third graders? Pretty sure, I'm not prudish, I'm completely secular, but like, that's odd. So, what's changed and why? Do we have a sense for that? Is there any kind of, like, reasoning, or maybe that's now been taught for the past thirty years since I've been in third grade? It's missed vote back then? You guys know anything about that? Maybe not a question for this group.
Well, I, I can only tell you it's at the end of fifth grade, not third grade.
Oh, okay, good.
I mean, I'm not, I'm just saying, like, in the state, so what will be released also is the changes and differences. Like, so, here's what are the new things. By the end of second grade, this is the information that we have to instruct students. By the end of fifth grade, by the end of sixth grade, by the end of eighth grade, that, all that information will be shared, and particularly at the buildings.
Yeah.
So, elementary school will just address second and fifth grade. The middle school will address sixth and eighth grade. The high school will address all, all the high school information.
Got it.
So, that way, when you go to those meetings, they'll be able to tell you, in fifth grade, this is the standard, but this is how we're teaching it.
Okay, good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? I just wanna all, oops, some, good.
Yes, hello, Andrea. I'm on Park Street. I have another question. So, there will be meetings for each individual school, right? When will these meetings happen? Any idea? Are there dates?
Back-to-school night.
At that meeting, that is when this will happen?
Yes.
So, it is, is it going to be at this time that the parents are going to discuss and say whether or not they approve of this curriculum or not?
Parents don't get approval of the curriculum. They, they can opt out of particular lessons. The district Board of Education approves the curriculum.
I heard from Mr. Romano, I remember him saying something about that you're going to get feedback on where we're at with the curriculum, and it may be in person with the parents, that there will be a discussion about this, back and forth between the board and the parents. What we as parents feel comfortable with and what we don't feel comfortable. Yeah, I understand about the opting out, but will there be a chance, you know, even that the kids will have a decision, you know, about what, what is going to happen, specifically about that, as far as our comfort level? When are you gonna listen to that feedback? So, when is going to be the opportunity for the parents to give our thoughts and our feedback, specifically about the curriculum?
So, the curriculum is gonna be posted online, and there'll be an opportunity for parents to provide feedback online, concerns online, and then at each building, there'll be opportunity at back-to-school night for discussion between the parents, administrators, and the health teacher about the implementation of that curriculum. And then hopefully in October, the finalized version of the curriculum will be presented to the Board of Education for approval. And again, at that evening, community members, after reviewing the curriculum, will have an opportunity to come ask questions and present comments or concerns at that board meeting. And then the board will vote on adopting the curriculum or not adopting the curriculum. That's up to them.
So, so there's gonna be three op, there's going to be three opportunities then for this process?
So, again, online feedback, opportunity at each building level, particular to the grade level, second and fifth grade, sixth to eighth grade, and high school, at back-to-school nights, and then final adoption by the board would probably happen in October. So, yes, three opportunities.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Frank Goachio, fifty-one Park Street. It's not really a question. The last time I was here in June, you had said that the kindergartners were gonna have in-person, you know, to meet everybody over the summer. So, that's happening the day before school starts. I guess now, if I'm understanding what she brought up, and I guess, you know, everything on the new curriculum, when is, when is back-to-school night? Sometime in September, mid-September? It's already in the August. So, we have to figure out all of the new curriculum, the changes, come up with our feedback, and then you have all a couple of weeks to take all of that, digest it, and make your recommendations. It seems to me that there's potentially a timing issue going on here. I mean, I'm new to this and just starting to come to these meetings, but it seems to me that you're not allowing enough of time to, to do things. You know, there wasn't the, like, the other districts be over the summer meetings with the kids, just getting into a, you know, kindergarten. Now, there seems to be an issue with this, which is gonna be a, a show come open, come back-to-school night for certain, I'm sure. And then, you know, I think you need to figure out, you know, your timing a little bit more, but that's the way I'm starting to see it. So, we'll see how back-to-school night goes and what happens at this meeting in October. Thanks.
Good evening. Maria Jose McKinley, four-twelve Paseca Avenue, West Caldwell. I'm a little bit overwhelmed. This is my first time in these meetings. I have a future kindergarten and a second grader. This sex... This sex education, what I'm listening, I'm learning, as we had this meeting tonight and just seeing the, and reading, trying to understand and not create controversial disagreements or confusion. But I am confused. I would love to, as a parent, I would love to know what is going to be shown to my kids and not really make it as, now, it's just, this is very an important topic because teaching my young daughters, so young, about sex education where I get to choose to opt out. But at the same time, I'd like to know what are exactly, we need to be transparent to the parents and we would like to know, I think, ahead of time. I think you're saying a school night, but, you know, I agree that a school night between September to October is such a short time to discuss all these subjects. I think that we need more of a time to actually, if we do decide to, for my kid to be present in that during the lesson, I will, I would like to know, like, specifically what videos and subjects specifically is going to be shown to my kids. Because there's going to be confusion now, that the kids are going to be opted out and then the kids are going to be in class, learning this new subject. They're going to talk between each other and it's going to create more confusion among the children. And then, it's going to be more, I think it's going to be a problem for the teacher to fix this during classroom, because there's going to be just questions and concerns and they're going to be confused. So, I think that we need to, I don't know, for some reason, we need to clear this as a more transparency, because it's not, I don't think is from the parents choosing for our children, but then it's such a short time for, that you will decide until October, I think is, I don't, I don't think is really appropriate for, for the kids that are going to be opting out and for the kids that are going to be in class, learning this new subject. They're going to be talking about it and during lunch and that's going to be a new thing. So, I don't know if there's going to be maybe a tutor site, like, outside of the school or more counseling. I don't know how you're going to adjust that, so that's just my concern. Thank you.
My name is Jessica Crown, 183 Forest Avenue, West Caldwell. In the minimal amount of time that we've had with the uploading of the curriculum on the website and the drive here, I was able to listen to one of the videos. Under the topic of self-care, which seems to be a non-controversial topic, but the video and the timing, and I agree with all of the fellow parents here, a month to prepare what will be presented to the children, to inform the parents of what those videos are, the material is, what it contains. I'd like to read to you, I stopped, played and stopped and played and stopped, to get word for word what these videos say. So, self-care. In one portion, speaking about therapy, it's okay to feel uncomfortable. Whereas, when we teach or discuss anything related to child abuse, sexual abuse, anything of that nature, we say, if you're uncomfortable, say something. If you see something, say something. If you feel uncomfortable, report it. Conflict of interest. The video also promotes political views, image of capitalism in all big, blown-up letters and flames. They're like, the letters are drawn in flames. And it says that we should live in a world that, with paid medical leave, comprehensive universal healthcare, environmental defense and renewal. If I go home and talk to my eight-year-old about this, she doesn't know what any of that is and it's not relevant to her life, currently as an eighth grade stu, eight-year-old student in third grade. It goes on to say, what if we lived in a world that went against a capitalist society? Also listed among healthcare and environmental issues is gender and sexuality liberation, to which the child responds to the mother who's dictating this video, I don't know what some of those things are, but I get what you're trying to say. What does that mean? They don't understand any of these things and we're pushing all of these topics and it's unnecessary. So, maybe this needs to be taken to the state level and I understand that concern. And there is no, you know, hard feelings or anything like that. I understand this is your position. At the end of the video, with that, that prompts questions for children to ask other questions. And what does that engage then, the child, the student, and the teacher in? What kind of conversation when you're talking about gender and sexuality? And then, how comfortable is the teacher on the receiving end of a question from an eight-year-old? And I know my eight-year-old will ask anybody any question that she feels like. So, I hope, when she's sitting around the dinner table with her grandmother and her grandmother asks her what she's learning in school, all of this is on the table. The last thing, with probably thirty to forty-five seconds left of the video, this is a direct quote, all of this is a direct quote, but, "We weren't made for this life we're living, this life that is literally hurting us, killing some of us, that makes us feel like a bubble bath alone will fix it." And that's what they relate to self-care for eight-year-olds on the state level. Not in Caldwell. I don't know any parent in Caldwell who would ever.
Was that on the, was that on our website?
Yes. It's in the curriculum. It's a link.
Is there a name of the video? Does it have a?
It's under the self-care section. I don't have a printout of the actual curriculum. It's on the, I don't know.
Actually, it's on, okay. That's for second graders?
This is third.
Third?
This is one, just one section. And... Maybe. Personal health strategies in May and June, personal growth and development, determine ways to care for and protect our bodies. It's all about capitalism. I have not looked into the other videos.
I did take a look at the curriculum today, but I didn't have a chance to look at the videos, so I'll take a look at them.
Thank you.
Obviously, the curriculum is in draft form.
Right.
So, these videos aren't something that we're particularly looking to adopt. A lot of the videos that we have linked to the curriculum were the videos that the State Department of Education kind of put out to us, which is why we're not presenting the curriculum to the board.
So, let's reiterate the process. What I believe I understood from Mr. Romano, I'm sorry.
But Dan, before you go then, when will we have the videos with the appropriate links that are actually going to be used?
The videos might not even be part of the final curriculum.
And if they're not, how quickly will we know that?
They'll, it'll be posted online. Like, the final version of the curriculum will be posted online prior to the board adopting it or voting to adopt it. So, those videos may be excluded, additional links may be added. That's why it's in draft form, because there's so much different information that's being presented and presented to the curriculum committee as well. So, that'll be, there'll be another meeting before October with the curriculum committee. I haven't seen the video either, so I can't.
So, again, we have, I think, Frank Boachio again, we have a timing problem here. How do we push off the approval of this curriculum that's not set yet? You don't know what videos and links. You don't have parent contra, you don't have parent feedback. I'm not going to comment on the videos or the curriculum, because I haven't looked at it yet, so I was holding off on that. Probably, my reaction's going to be a little worse than everybody else's, but I don't see how two weeks to, you know, I don't see how there's enough of time. So, how do we push this off, especially if it's up to second grade, up to fifth grade? I don't think that you implement a change like this in a month, when it might not be necessary to do. My other question is, it's not like math where you give somebody, a teacher, you know, a way to solve a problem, two plus two. All math is mostly the same, different now than it was when I was younger. How are you going to train the teachers, I don't know the teachers in the district yet, to interpret what they're going to teach? He brought up a comment about, you know, how things have changed over the years. Things have changed over the years because people have changed over the years, teachers have changed over the years. They've come out of college with their own views. How are we going to eliminate a teacher's view on interpreting this material, teaching it to my, you know, to our children? Again, how are you going to implement that in a month and roll it out? So, I think maybe the real conversation that has to happen is, how do we extend and push this back to a later time? I don't know what the federal and the state guidelines are to implement this, but, you know, from everything I'm hearing, a month is just not enough of time to make this all happen.
Well, there's only a handful of changes in most of the curriculum, so it's not a substantial overhaul of the curriculum. There are four new components in second grade standards and several new ones in fifth grade, so it's not a complete overhaul of the curriculum. Again, it's an opportunity for resources and the links are additional resources, it's not specific to the curriculum. Those are materials that the teacher may use. Obviously, I haven't seen the video, so I can't comment on it, but it would be something that's developmentally appropriate, something that students can access easily and would be presented to parents well before we would present it to students. So, obviously, these videos are not videos I previewed, so I can't comment on them, but it sounds to me like they wouldn't be part of the final version of the curriculum. And again, if for some...
We'd be choosing the videos, right?
Will you just come to the microphone, sir?
Sorry. I think that, obviously, some...
I'll wait till you come to the microphone.
Obviously, somebody at some point along the way felt those videos appropriate. So, now, whether our district finds them appropriate, I guess, is going to be, depending on who's choosing.
Right, well, that's the, again, that's the curriculum committee process. The curriculum committee incorporates teachers, Mr. Romano, Ms. Fisher, Ms. Jacobs, and they presented this draft. And then, we go back to the table and we say, okay, this isn't appropriate, this is appropriate, we need more materials for this. So, some of it might be curriculum and the materials we presented and adopted later. I can't say specifically. That's why we go through this process.
So, what's the timeline between the committee meeting, the curriculum committee meeting, and making their selections and recommendations?
They've already done that and then now, they presented it to the curriculum committee. And now, we would either choose to adopt, which we are not adopting this evening, we are continuing the process to review it and make changes along the way. Now, it may, as like I said, it may be presented in October. That's not a definitive date. If we need more information and more research, we'll do that. My hope is, we'll be able to get it done by the board meeting in October. If that's not something that we can do, then we would move it back to November. We're not in any urgency to get this out to everyone in the community yet. We wanted to present the draft form so people could give us comments and feedback. That was the idea of putting that out to the community.
Okay. So, October, it's not a definite. And then, so, just so I understand, back to school night is when we'll be presented with sort of some final draft, some public draft.
Back to school night, you'll be presented the opportunity to raise your questions and concerns about the new PE standards, the curriculum, and the PE health teacher can then explain, this is typically how we talk to second graders about this particular topic. And then, the principal can, will go over the curriculum and then talk about specifics that, how you maybe opt out and when that time would typically be. This is the, we'll introduce this in May, we'll introduce this in June. This topic will be taught in late April, so we'll have a better idea about it then.
Okay. And you know, the opt-out, the whole opt-out thing is probably going to raise more issues than not, because if I opt out and I teach my son something at home and the rest, you know, half of the class doesn't opt out, and then, like somebody said, they're talking at lunch and on the playground and...
I understand.
So, there's going to be a whole, you know, a whole issue to be dealt with also.
I do understand. It's a state regulation and a board policy. We have to give the opportunity to opt out of those lessons.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Taryn Kaufman, 35 Marshall Street, West Caldwell, again. Just as, like, as a peace of mind for us parents here, talking about these videos, which are clearly examples, Dr. Coughlin, can I have you put on the record that whatever video is presented to the parents as this is what your child will be watching? Will you yourself please view the videos so that at least we, as parents, know that somebody here?
Yes.
And I think it should be you. You should watch all the videos.
I'll be watching every single video.
Thank you.
That's presented by the committee.
Thank you.
I apologize, I did not have a chance to do that.
And when will the final decision be made about when, what videos will be used?
I don't know what videos, and that might change. So, again, the videos we have now may change in January, February, or March, because they're resources or materials. They would be shared with the parents before viewed by any students, but I don't want to say, this is definitely the final video, because obviously, these standards are new. So, there's going to be lots of companies that put out new videos that are more developmentally appropriate than the ones we previously had. But they would be adopted by the board with the curriculum change before we present it to the community. So, I don't want to say, this is definitely the video, and then come back in February and March or April and say, oh, we found a better one. But we don't want to show that one because parents or the committee hasn't had an opportunity to see it so.
Chris Turco, 50 Park Ave, Andrea's husband.
Chris, before you go, do we need a break? Are we okay? Just...
Does she need a break?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I'll be brief. Just for clarification, because it sounds like there's some confusion, the draft, as it's called, that was released today, I guess? Is that released? That's already what's been created by Caldwell, West Caldwell Board of Ed?
That's the, that's the curriculum draft that came out of the committee, yes.
Okay. So, the videos that are in there have to be assumed were reviewed by this committee?
I would, I would have to make that assumption, yes.
Okay. So, as to your point, Ms. Geddy, is this what we're reviewing and commenting before back to school night? Or is there going to be another revision before back? I'm just trying to get clarification.
It's going to, it's going to be available for comment on this particular curriculum. And then, it'll be updated as it goes on. There might be another request for comment with updates to it. So, you'll get, the public will get information, like, there's an update to the curriculum, please take a look at it, page five, this has been updated, page twelve, this has been updated. So, that way, each person in the community can make a comment based on those updates.
Okay, but to that point, no changes are going to be made from now till back to school night?
There may be changes, obviously, there will be changes. That's a month away.
Okay. So, there could be changes right up to back to school night?
Based on the comments about the videos, I could pretty much tell you there will be changes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So, this is built on a lot of checks and balances, right? A lot of things need to happen. This is the first and best opportunity for you all to provide your feedback. It's obviously important, right? So, I think there, I don't want to speak on behalf of the board, but there's a need for us to go through all this. There's three more steps before we approve anything, right? And I don't think anybody, well, again, not speak for the board, but now's our opportunity to go back to the drawing board, to take your feedback and to use it constructively, right? And then, we'll come back with something else. So, it probably will change, Chris, a couple times between now and back to school night. And my guess is on back to school night, there will still be some concerns, right? And we'll have to listen to those. And then, my guess is we'll continue to hear concerns every day thereafter until we finally have to vote. And even on the day that we vote, you all are going to be here again, providing your feedback and your input, making sure that we know what you're all thinking before we cast our vote.
One more point of clarification. It was mentioned, Dr. Coughlin, you said, there's not a lot of changes for certain grade levels. So, in that draft, again, I didn't get a chance to look at it. Is there, is there very specific markings that this is what we've always taught versus this is a change?
No, when I, when, again, when the information goes out for feedback online, you'll see a summary. Second grade changes, fifth grade changes, sixth grade changes, eighth grade. So, there'll be a summary sheet that specifically targets those changes.
Okay. Is that, you reviewed it, is that how it was presented, that video?
No, no, that, that's not where that, you'll see that. When I send out my request for comments, you'll see that as embedded into where you go to make comments.
Okay. So, there could be an assumption that that video's been in the curriculum for twenty years?
That could be a video that was part of the curriculum. I don't, I don't, I don't think so.
I mean, I've never reviewed a curriculum to that level of detail, but... I mean, I've never reviewed a curriculum to that level of detail, but it's not indicated whether that's a new video or an old video, or...
No, I don't, I, again, I haven't seen the video, so I don't want to comment on it.
So the request would be, just make sure we know, you know, this is way we've always done it.
Even if the video was in before, it obviously doesn't sound like it's appropriate now, so.
Yeah, I don't know, that's why. So there'll be clear designation of this is the old curriculum, this is something new?
No, there's going to be a list of the changes in second and fifth grade, but the curriculum itself is just going to be presented as the curriculum. There isn't going to be a side-by-side with the old curriculum and the new curriculum, there'll be a summary sheet of the new standards that have to be taught in second grade and fifth grade, and sixth grade and eighth grade. So when parents are reviewing, they can look at the list that I'm sending out separately that says, these are the additions to second grade, or the changes to second grade, or fifth grade. Many of the standards are already in, they would just move down from sixth grade to fifth grade, or eighth grade to sixth grade. So, they may be new, but they're not new to the overall standards, they're new to that grade level. But you'll see it listed, second grade changes, fifth grade changes, sixth grade, eighth grade, and it'll be delineated that way. The curriculum itself won't have that embedded in it.
Okay, so I reviewed the state curriculum overview, and it had these changes, and it was kind of very vague of, we will introduce, you know, sexual love in fifth grade, for example. I don't know what that means, so if the curriculum then lists out twenty different things of that class, how do I know as a parent what's new, what's always been taught about that and what hasn't? I think we should have some...
Well, if it's a new standard, then it's new to that grade level. You'll, you'll see the standards are independent of the curriculum, but they're embedded in the curriculum. So you'll see standard 5.1, this is what we're doing, stand, again, I'm just making numbers up, standard 2.1.8B, this is the standard that has to be taught in second grade, this is what we're going to be doing for teacher standard.
Will it correspond with what in the curriculum?
Right.
It will have some correspondence back to the curriculum?
Yes.
Okay.
Because you have to have, the curriculum link has to be linked back to the standard.
Yeah, okay, all right, that's right, okay, thank you.
So there may be three standards taught with one activity.
Right, confusing with the standard versus...
Yes, I understand.
I got you, thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? Okay, just one further note was, Ms. Geddy reminded me, we are now, as you see, we have a new format that we're going through, so a lot of this is online on a portal, so you may start to see some of us up here with laptops or tablets, so we're not surfing, we're kind of looking at what's on the agenda, some of the attachments that are there, just to...
Trying to move away from papers and getting ourselves into the 21st century.
Yes, excellent. So if there are no other questions or comments, I'm going to ask for a motion to move to executive session at approximately 8:20 PM. Do I have a motion?
Salute.
I have a second.
Okay.
Beautiful. Brian, just take the roll, please.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Ayes, abstentions, motion carried.
Thanks for coming, everybody.